Tom, I still have questions here in your public spot.
I see. Regular meeting of the City Council, Needles Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell, here. Councilmember McCorkle, here. Vice Mayor Merritt, here. Mayor Jernigan, here. Councilmember Pope, here. Councilmember Bell, and Councilmember Longbreak, here.
Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recession to executive session, executive session. John.
Yes, the council will be meeting in closed session. Item A is conference with legal counsel regarding significant exposure to litigation to potential cases. Item B is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the matter of City of Needles versus Adrian Chavez. The case number is listed in the agenda. Item C is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Needles versus Midnight Peak Solutions LLC. And again, the case number is listed in the agenda. And then, item D is public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, and that relates to the position of interim city clerk.
The City Council, Needles Public Utility Authority, Housing Authority, City of Needles will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell, here. McCorkle, here. Vice Mayor Merritt, here. Mayor Jernigan, here. Councilmember Pope, here. Bell, here. And Longbreak, here.
Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes. The council met in closed session on item A, which was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation involving two potential cases. There was no reportable action on that item. On item B, that was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, one case, City of Needles versus Adrian Chavez. The case number is listed in the agenda, and there was reportable action on that item. There was a motion to authorize the filing of that action and ratifying the filing of that action. And again, the case name and number is listed in the agenda, and the vote was as follows. Councilmember Campbell made the first. The second was made by Councilmember Longbreak, and the vote in favor of filing and ratifying the filing of that lawsuit was as follows. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Merritt was in favor. Councilmember Campbell was in favor. Councilmember Longbreak was in favor. Councilmember McCorkle was in favor. Councilmember Pope was in favor. And Councilmember Bell was also in favor. The next item was item C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation in the City of Needles versus Midnight Peak Solutions LLC, involving 209 Goodwill Street. The case number is listed in the agenda, and there was reportable action on that item. There was a motion to approve a settlement in which the defendant would pay the city its legal fees, staff time, and some penalties in the amount of $10,937.98 within five days of council's approval, and owner would correct the vote violations by December 31, 2024, by the end of the year. And there was the motion to approve this settlement was by Councilmember Campbell. The second was by Vice Mayor Merritt, and the vote was as follows. Vice Mayor Merritt was in favor of approving the settlement. Campbell was in favor of approving the settlement. Councilmember Longbreak was in favor. Councilmember McCorkle was in favor. Councilmember Pope was in favor. And Councilmember Bell was in favor. The next item was item D on the agenda, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The title of the position was interim city clerk. There was reportable action taken on that item. There was a motion to appoint Candace Clark as a six-month interim city clerk, and the motion was made by Councilmember Campbell, the second by Vice Mayor Merritt, and the vote in favor was Vice Mayor Merritt in favor, Councilmember Campbell in favor, Councilmember Longbreak in favor, Councilmember McCorkle in favor, Councilmember Pope in favor, and Councilmember Bell in favor. And that concludes your report out from closed session.
Please stand for the question.
United States of America, considering public services hands one nation after God, individual delivery just.
... Floyd Dale Johnson, and we remember her with such greats and all the jobs, the job that she did for us, you know, so to speak. Now I'll have to look into the bottom. Lord, thank you. Thank you, Lord, for all our service. Thank you for the hard work we sacrifice. May you continually bless them, and generously give them wise and discerning hearts to skill the people that we, the people rest in. In the mayor, city leaders, staff, and council wisdom, so they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and very order. So, Lord, bless their work.
I'll take the people of the agenda, but need to approve. I'll send it off the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. McCorkle, yes. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Mayor Jernigan, yes. Councilmember Pope, yes. Bell, yes. And Longbreak, yes.
Introductions. Tonight, we have prior council, Councilman Tim Terrell, John Goodmanson, and then your newly elected councilperson back for a return visit, Zach Longaker. As city attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure that have been adopted by the council for its meetings, mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called or ordered by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Members of the public attending council meetings shall observe the same rules for and decorum applicable to the council. And as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comment.
Bell votes turned off or said in their silent vote, "Thank you." Public affairs persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code Section 54950 for the City Council from taking actions specific items of utility here of future.
Good evening, Wayne Fulmer, 2237 Casa Loma Street.
It should be on.
It's, it's on.
Capa, Capa?
Is it, it's turned on?
Yeah.
It's turned up all the way. I don't know why it's. I can hear it.
I'm starting to turn it down.
Okay.
Here. Turn it up.
Okay. Ben Wayne Fulmer, 2237 Casa Loma Street. I just really wanted to read this real quick. I think Jen's been thinking up entry like a yo-yo, and congratulated, one of my staff congratulated her, and then I was like, wait, but they haven't reached the cap yet. So I thought, okay, you know what? I'm gonna do this the right way. So, as we move forward after the barrel race, I wanted to take a moment to express my deepest appreciation for the opportunity to run through the office and for the support I received throughout the campaign. While the outcome did not go as I was hoping, I assure you that my commitment to our community remains strong. I believe the potential of our city, and I will continue to work towards finding ways to support growth, improve the living of our residents, and contribute making our city a beacon of life and the beacon of the east coast of California. We are fortunate to live in a community that values progress, and I remain dedicating, dedicated to doing everything I can to foster that growth, whether as a private citizen or throughout the opportunities to serve. I also want to extend my congratulations to you, Jen, on your victory, and I look forward to working together in any way I can to help our city move forward. We share a common goal, seeing our community thrive, and I know that by working together we can achieve great things. Thanks for that. It's working now. Anyway, thank you again for your leadership, and I'm pleased to know that you have my continued support as we move forward in your role as mayor. Our city's future is bright, and I'm excited to see the progress we can make together, Jen. Congratulations. Congratulations to other candidates who have won. And I'm looking forward to having a chance over the next several meetings to share with you some of the things that I was finding out as I went door to door and I was speaking to the community. I'd like Bill to share some of the things that they had expressed to me, their concerns and stuff that they feel, whether they're right, wrong, indifferent. At least you know that's what they're feeling, and if this is what they're feeling, then we need to find either ways to address it if it's a fact, find the ways to turn it off if it's false, and somewhere in the middle, make sure everything else is getting taken care of again. Thank you, Jen. Congratulations.
Who else? If not, public comment will be closed. Presentation, a 10-minute time limit for presentation has been established per Municipal Code Section 218. Captain Trangle and Lieutenant Galt from the Southern County Sheriff's Department, Colorado River Station, will present a donation to the military dogs.
So, as part of our station nonprofit, it's a big fund which we have turned, used to back the community, a lot of kids programs, really love doing. In this case, we want to make donations to the military dogs who support their kids as they defend our country and defend our freedom. And I'll put this to a big use, and there you go. Yes.
Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the council consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or many member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address city council on matters scheduled on a consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items two through five on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Got a call for the motion? Move to approve. Second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. McCorkle, yes. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Councilmember Pope, yes. Bell, yes. Longbreak, yes.
End of council consent calendar. Regular council items. Authorize the city clerk's department to publish a notice of vacancies on the various boards and commissions due to the expiration of terms. City manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you so much. All right, that's, okay, great. Yeah, members of the council in front of you, we have a, we need authorization for the clerk's office to go out. We've got some vacancies that we need to fill, so we encourage you all to apply, because we need, we need great outstanding citizens such as yourselves to participate. So we need to go and put into the paper two vacancies to expire December 31, 2028 for the Board of Public Utilities. They meet the first and third Tuesday of the month at 4:00 p.m. We need one for planning commission. The term will expire in 2028, first Wednesday of each month. Parks Direct Commission, we have three vacancies. The terms expired the 2028th as well, and then the housing commission, we have one vacancy. So I need authorization, the city clerk's office, to publish a notice of vacancies on the various boards and commissions due to the expiration of terms. So we'd like to go out and move that forward.
Then we have a motion to call for the authorize the city clerk's department to publish a notice of vacancies on the various boards and commissions due to the expiration of terms. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. McCorkle, yes. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Councilmember Pope, yes. Bell, yes. And Longbreak, yes. Thank you.
Waive the reading and approve for introduction ordinance 669-AC of the City Council of the City of Needles, California, amending Chapter 15A Recreation Area Use of the Needles Municipal Code to modify Section 15A-3 to update recreation closing hours and add Section 15A-7.1 entitled Pump Track Regulations. Do I read you for eight? You, I would need to know the.
We know.
City manager.
Yeah, briefly, in front of you, we have ordinance. Last council meeting on October 8, you adopted the rules in order to make them enforceable to embed them into the city municipal code. We have to approve them by ordinance, so in front of you, we have the same rules that were put in front of you that you've already voted for before. Now we're putting into ordinance as, as you remember, park hours from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Basically, these are going to be for the pump track. We want to keep the pump track safe. It's a $4 million grant that we received in order to help build this of the $4 million. It's about half a million was put towards this pump track. And so basically, what I need from you tonight is the approval of this ordinance 669-AC to amend Chapter 15A of the municipal code to change the park hours from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then also embed these new, these new rules for the pump tracks. With that, that's our recommended action.
Call for the motion. The vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. McCorkle, yes. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Councilmember Pope, yes. Bell, yes. And Longbreak, yes.
Waive the reading and approve for introduction ordinance 670-AC of the City Council of the City of Needles, California, amending Chapter 15A of the Needles Municipal Code to add Section 15A-7.2 entitled Splashpad Area Regulations. City manager.
Again, on October 8, you adopted these rules or you recommended approval of these rules, so we need to make them formal to adopt them into the Needles Municipal Code. So in front of you, we have ordinance 670-AC, which will codify these rules and regulations. Obviously, we want to provide a safe environment for our children to come play 12 years and younger to, you know, participate in our new splash pad. We will have a ribbon cutting for both Duke Walkins and the skate park. All that will occur December 3, so please come on out. We'll get you squared away with that. But in front of you tonight is ordinance 670-AC, and we need to approve this to codify the code and then add the splash pad area regulations.
Why is it 12?
The intent was we took the 12 and under to be, to make it safe. Obviously, but older kids will be playing with their brothers and sisters, and we're okay with that. But at the end of the day, if there's somebody that's acting inappropriately, that's over that age, gives us some teeth to get them removed, you know, kids can be kids.
Call for the motion.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. McCorkle, yes. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Councilmember Pope, yes. Bell, yes. And Longbreak, yes.
As we go on to the next, I'd like to thank Randy Torrance and Kathy Rash. We should give them a hand for, I'm glad, I'm really glad.
Madam Mayor, may I, I need to recuse myself. This item is about me, so I must step out.
City Council Resolution 2024-44 of the City Council, the City of Needles, approving the first amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement with Patrick Martinez, city attorney.
Yes, Mayor, on April 25 of 2023, the City Council adopted Resolution 2023-28, approving an employment agreement between the city, Patrick Martinez, under which you hired Patrick Martinez as the city manager. The agreement's for a three-year term. It commenced on October 2, 2023. It continues through October 1, 2026. The mayor, Mayor Jernigan, and Councilmember Bell acted as representatives of the city in negotiating certain terms of the agreement set forth in a first amendment to the City Manager Agreement that's attached as Exhibit B to this agenda item in your packet. The proposed amendment to the agreement adjusts the salary amount. It doesn't change anything else. It sets the salary at $217,000 per year. Currently, the salary for the city manager is at $197,000 a year, and this would increase it to $217,000 a year.
Yes. I think at this time, it's a little bit premature to give them that much of a raise.
I think this, I think that this raise is appropriate. I think that he does a lot for our sake. We don't have an assistant city manager underneath him, so do have that cost savings. He is, when we go to conferences, the term, this is all crap. And people know, it's, I mean, it's a huge aspect. I just, I think this is appropriate. I think we might have started kind of a little less than we possibly could have, so I think that this is appropriate.
Yes, I think it's appropriate. One of the things we have with our city, being a small city, a small city government, it sets us apart from other cities that are bigger. You go to Bolheim, Goodyear, Habsburg, the Kingman, the Los Angeles, the Royal North States, they have a lot of departments, and they have a lot of department heads. Every single one of those persons is a supervisor or manager within that department with subordinate employees underneath it, and each one of those persons collects a salary. We don't have that in Needles. We have the city manager. We don't have assistance. We don't have a bunch of department heads. Patrick does it all. He is all of those things. So I think that this is more than, and I don't, we have a personal skills. We go, I traveled to all of the events, give as much training as there's even allowed us, and it's amazing how much, you know, it's just kind of scary to lose breakfast and use so much, getting nervous almost, just, and only been there seven years, training for that position. So I am very confident that is well deserved, and I, I'm proud of it.
I want to mention too, you know, January 26, a few days off, you know, we got notice that Rite Aid was closing, and in 24 hours, Patrick had contacted state, county, and within that time period, less than a week, we had a pharmaceutical that was going to be delivered to Needles. It had gotten Safeway, Spis, of Walmarts signed up that they would accept the California Medi-Cal and the Medicare. There were 3,200 prescriptions that went, you know, kind of almost flawlessly to help our citizens. And as a city, we didn't have to do that. That is probably an investment retail, you know, that we want to attract. But again, Patrick took the initiative, the leadership to go out and help us with that instance. And, and I do attend all the meetings with him, and he is one of those up-and-coming city managers that, you know, some cities will call up one day and say, well, give me whatever you want, just something to us. He's in contact with, now we've got marketing teams out there working for us, you know, to help us with our tourism, you know, our employees. I mean, we're just doing really great things here. You know, we're announcing that we got the parks done thanks to his team he put together, again, Randy Torrance and Kathy Rash, and we're just doing such great things now. I just feel that he's really deserving, and there was a cost study that was done, and he is still in the 30% tile of waste states. And I just think it boosts us, the City of Needles, to afford him itself.
Councilmember Longbreak, call for the group call. Yes. So, we'll speak on services. This is 10%, so if he was only asking for five, the more, I mean, kind of, and kind of pissed it off. Also, he was asking for five, just to, you know, that's what he was officially asking.
Call for the motion. I move to approve. Second. A second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes. McCorkle, no. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Councilmember Pope, yes. Councilmember Bell, no. And Councilmember Longbreak, no. So we have.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear all the votes. So what was the vote tally? The vote requires four affirmative, this resolution requires four affirmative votes to pass, and I could not hear all the votes.
Oh, talk about it again. Yes. Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. No.
No.
We have three no's and three yeses.
So three no's and three yeses, so the mayor breaks the tie.
I vote yes.
Motion, passage. As city attorney.
I, just on that item, before you call Patrick back in, I just wanted to note for the record that that item was submitted by Mayor Jernigan and Councilmember Bell, not by Patrick Martinez or my office. It's, it seemed about two representatives of the council.
Attorney, please.
Yes, some of the items that my office has been working on for the city include representing the city on labor and employment matters, advising, providing day-to-day labor and employment advice to the city, also representing the city in the legal action that was approved by the council in closed session this evening. In addition to that, assisting the city reviewing live scans on an as-needed basis for individuals that are applying to work in the needles cannabis industry, also advising the city on Brown Act and conflict of interest legal questions. We also continue to work with the staff to enforce the voter-approved cannabis ordinance. And the voters, as I understand it, although it hadn't been certified yet, approved the alternative square foot tax, and we work closely with staff on developing that item. And so once that is formally certified by the registrar of voters, then we'll be working with staff on any implementation of that. And then we continue to represent the city and work with staff with code enforcement matters, including the case that was voted, that was voted to be settled this evening in closed session, and that we reported out of closed session. Also assisting the city with public contracting matters. And then although we haven't had any recently in the immediate past, we're, we frequently work with the city staff on responding to any public work or chat very much. And that's my report.
City Manager.
Right, so we had our second annual Veterans Day event this past Saturday, well-attended event. Thank you all, for those of you that came down, thank you for the military moms that put this event on. It was a well-attended event, celebrated our veterans. It was a really remarkable event. So what, you know, those that were veterans enjoyed a complimentary breakfast, and then those that aren't veterans, for five dollars, you got coffee and food for the wagon wheel. So it was delicious. So I want to thank those that painted the canyon. There was a paint party, so thank you George DeLeon and team for coming out. We had a whole group of volunteers. Thank you for the mayor for painting for the paint. But basically, we went out and painted the wagon. Thank you for the captain going up towards the end of that. Appreciate that. It was, it was a great event. Thrilled to announce that the city won an award, twenty twenty four American Public Works Association Best Project of the Year. If you haven't gone down to Bell's Beach Park, you know, I, I, you need to go down there. Just go check it out. Now's the time, it's nice and cool. So we won the best project for the, this association. So thank you from Rainy Torrance to Kathy Roush, to, you know, Jesse Fregoso and Maintenance for moving this forward, and our T K team and our engineer for getting it built. But it's so proud when, when we're, we're here with, you know, Whittier Elementary School, Washington Park Community House in Pasadena, Santiago Park Gas House, City of Santa Ana, Becca Sports Park, County at Riverside. And so you've got the City of Needles competing against these big other cities, and I'm just so proud of the work that our team does. So I'm really thankful of the work that we're doing. We also had our first community fall festival for all of you that came out. Thank you. We had vendors, the thirty-eight local vendors showcased their, everything from trinkets to pens that were provided by the Torrance family and chocolates and all sorts of different things. So I appreciate our public works team for getting together and making our park beautiful so people could come and enjoy themselves. Also, we've got new barbecues since all the Jacksonville Park. Now that it's nice and cool, go down to Jacksonville Park, enjoy those new barbecues. Thank you to our team. Our public works team works diligently to make sure that we have amenities provided to our residents. People live here for a reason, and we want to make sure that we give them what they can, because it's important. We did meet with the school district last week, last Wednesday, community stakeholders got together. So the city plays a role of safety, public safety, streets, public works, code enforcement. That's really our role, but when it comes to making sure that education's taking place, you really focus on Polyverde Community College. For all those that aren't aware, that live here, you pay a parcel tax of about thirty-seven dollars. So each one of you pays thirty-seven dollars to Polyverde Community College. So if you haven't utilized that asset, please utilize that asset. I put the new superintendent's email here and the finance director's email here because we need to ensure that we are engaged in their comprehensive educational plan. Because at the end of the day, they can get the plumbers. So we've got the plumbers through the private sector. I'm not calling you out, Joe, but you're doing a great job. So we got the plumbers, we've got the school, which is the education piece. We've got the city, and then we got programs like the County at First Institute that bring them all together. So, you know, we're all, you know, we want more jobs than just cannabis. That's fine, but we all need to work together to be able to do that because the city needs to be good at what we're good at. Polyverde needs to be good at what they're good at, and the private sector needs to be good at what they're good at. So it was a good opportunity for us to voice our opinions to the new president because at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're not the redheaded stepchild and forgotten about because at the end of the day, we're just as important as everybody else. No, no, if you're redheaded, I apologize, but I'm just. So next weekend, we've got the Needles Animal Shelter is hosting our vaccination and licensing clinic. So go ahead and get your rabies shots over at the animal shelter. We put the, we put it out, nice little flyer that our team put together. Come on out, get your rabies shots for twelve dollars, and then you can get your license at half the price. And then finally, I want to talk about the open house at Pacific Clinics on November twentieth. We've talked a lot about this. Mental health is a big issue in our community, and how do we solve mental health? Will we get these private stakeholders to help step up and assist us? So Pacific Clinics, I welcome you all to come out on November twentieth from eleven AM to three PM over at the east side of town. Next to the Route sixty-six cable broadband, there's a, there's going to be a ribbon cutting with speeches and all those great things. Please come on out. Twelve o'clock, you're going to hear speeches from the mayor. But again, we all play a part, and these folks have stepped up in our community to help fill that, that role. And earlier, we talked about square last thing. On December third, please come on out. We've got a ribbon cutting taking place at Duke Watkins Park, four million dollar project. We just gave a round of applause to Rainy and Kathy, but they need to hear your support. We all need to hear your support. So this is a beautiful park. Later, we'll invite the family, the Duke Watkins family, to come out. We'll do a special thing for them. But at the end of the day, it's been a year, and we need to make sure we get this park opened up so we can all celebrate it before the summer comes again. So, all right, folks, thank you. That concludes my report.
And Councilmember Campbell? Good morning, your name's. First of all, Candace, we're excited. I personally have watched everything that you've done in coming in and filling in and helping and helping to help get things going forward. And it's with a heavy heart that your transition is a host for death and not for retirement. But that's where we're at, and I have full confidence in you. I have been utilizing it for the past year, moving forward towards this, and I think it's great. Welcome. Thanks, City Attorney. After Chilburg being around the other day, someone said something about one of our bathrooms at one of the parks, and I went to every single bathroom in this city, and they were sparkling clean. I took pictures of every one of them. They had the toilets on the wall, nothing even tall. I was very excited, but all of them, the parks, and they said that one that's closed, that it isn't open yet. So when I went that day, everything was, was clean, and I just put a document on and said, hey, there's, I'm going to go check out the bathrooms. So we went around. Actually, we, actually, the only, the only thing that I haven't done in the parks was a special way. There was a bunch of bags, dogs up against the fence, a bunch of bags that were dumped from the building dirt hole of the Hope South, just to trap there. So that was handled too. So that, that was, that's one of the things that I checked on, and I know that Zapp checks on it too. We, we check on the parks, and we, we check to make sure those things are done, the trash cans are being empty. The, the, we stay on top of those things, and we welcome anyone to let us know when something's wrong because we can't fix it and we don't know. At the Omaha Hobbies, several people came to me about the parks and the rec center. I explained to them that the building was under renovation, that that one side of the park, the parking lot available belongs to the council. The parking lot on the, on the pool side belongs to the city. And our city workers were able to go up there and get the lights, spray the work on that with our teeth, and got the lights up and running on the, on the pool side, which is the rec center. Families, children coming out of the rec center at night, the complaint was that it was so dark, and they were concerned about someone tripping. So that, that was handled very efficiently. I sent an email to Patrick on some things, complained that someone had a bug in their alley, investigating that, taking pictures, sending an email, and then going around looking at the front of the house and sending an email. The trash was removed within three hours. That trash was thawed out, refrigerators and appliances, within three hours, that thawed. And, and something was brought to my attention again about a dumpster in the middle of the street that had been there for a really long time. And when I sent that email, Bernie walked over and pushed the dumpster out of the street onto the, up onto the property. So those are, I sent the emails on seven different things, and they were handled right away. So I encourage anyone, you don't have to come and go to get them once, but you can send an email to Patrick. You see something, or you can tell other people. They just send an email to Patrick, then it's in writing, and then that's, that's the thing. So it's kind of like a little ace in horse race, if you're putting writing. And so complaints have to be in writing. I don't care what they're complaining about. Let's see. I want to say something about college too, because I was actually at a meeting, that meeting that the. I, I first, I want to say thank you all for coming here tonight. It's really nice to have an audience out here and that people come here and participate in this. And I'm trying really hard to get people to come, to see what we do. Don't talk about what we do, don't speculate about what we do, don't speculate about what's on the agenda. Come here and see firsthand what goes on here, and that's why we have a public forum. And check it out, before executive session, there's public forum before executive session. So the public can come in and speak before we have executive session and say what you want to say in your little three minutes, but you have, you have a say even before we go to the executive session. Then you have to leave because we know that we're here, but it's not left out there for me. But that's, that's an opportunity for you also. So we always encourage the public to come and talk with us, and that goes for the school. We have a college here. A hobby community college is not going to be a hobby community college starting twenty twenty five. It's going to be a four-years-old, which means Polyverde College is the only community college in the tri-state, from Kingman to Lachlan, the Needles, the Habsin, and every few between. Hundred ninety-seven thousand people, we're the only new college. So it's a great asset, and that community college, which is seated in life, needs to hear our voice. Patrick isn't the one who calls the benefits shut by me. I said we were the redheaded stepchild of the county long enough, and they now know our. They come here, we have, we have our supervisor come here, we've had just a senator come down here to look at our city, to read us and hear our concerns. The school needs to hear our concerns too. They need to hear that we want as many classes here as they have in life. We are, we are, we are the same school, and we should have these opportunities here. So the sleepy wheel gets the green, so when these things are announced, if you could just pass it around, I'm put on my Facebook, City Council, personal, get the word out there, and I'm the key preaching these words and keep advising people to come here because people have to come forward and participate in this. And if they don't think we care, they don't think we want it, you know, it's like, you don't use it. You lose it with many things in life. So I think that's the other thing. Of course, my heart, I love Dale, she was so good to me when I came like down. So she was always available to me, and I loved her during, during, and I'm so sad that she has passed away. I'm looking to throw up, so again, says some big shoes to fill, and I think she's a great woman.
Councilmember O'Corpul? I'd just like to, I guess, start off with remembering Dale. I know she's brought a lot of experience to this council, last council, councils before that. She worked for the city for, at her. She definitely helped me in the very beginning with a lot of different questions that I had. I was at first maybe a little scared of her, but formed out of her personality, had a lot of laughs with her. So she's definitely going to be missed. I am one of those people who would, does not. I think that death is truly partly a bad thing. It can be a very painful thing, so I'm happy that she is resting well. I would like to congratulate Candace. I know Dale has cast a lot onto you, so definitely a very confident, we're going to need to move this forward. So again, congratulations. We definitely appreciate that you already have been doing the last two years, but I hope that. I look forward to working with you for at least two weeks. Also want to keep it a little bit lighter, not put all the things about there. So I want to congratulate Mayor Jim for another two years. Also, for next two years. Also to Ellen and Tana on, very happy to help her again. I would forward to hopefully to this program. And congratulations to Zach for serving time, and then excited to come back and serve some more time. So that's exciting. One more good thing is the Voice Football Team, Needles Mustangs. They are still undefeated. They have done their first playoff game. They got another playoff game next Saturday, then here in Needles at one o'clock. There was less seating available on the last day, so I'm hoping that the word gets out and more people show up to their day game and cheer along, make that stadium outside sound pretty loud and get a prompt to go see, just like that.
My Speaker, Mayor. So this is my last council member request, so get ready for my twenty-minute dissertation. Um, no, I just wanted to make some comments. First off, I'm going to piggyback on what everybody else said, that Candace, we're really excited that you're going to be our interim state clerk. You've just been amazing, and we're really excited to see where you grow. John, thank you so much over the last four years and even a little before for everything you've done to help me out with this. It's been hard, but it's been so nice. I can just call you and ask a question. And Patrick, I first got into all of this, into city, you know, being interested in city council years ago because I was concerned about where the city was going, as a lot of us have been. And I couldn't be more relieved to be leaving the, leaving council now with you in charge. You are amazing. We're so lucky to have you, and stay forever, please. And my request is going to be for all of the council members to just be kind to each other. This has been the hardest thing that I've done. I know I've spent a lot of my career in municipal government and stuff, but being in front of people, it's really hard. It's hard for me to speak in front of people. You know, I feel like every decision I've ever made, every vote I've ever made on council is for, I've taken two things to account, and it's, was it fiscally responsible? Was this right for the city? And is it legal? Is it, you know, is it, will it hold up? Does it look good? Is it moral? I, during this time, I've had other people on council. I don't feel that they've all made the same choices over the years, but I do feel like we're in a good spot now. And so I just ask that y'all be kind to each other because everybody's trying, and we have one goal here, and we, we're just looking out for the best interests of the city, fiscally and legally. That's, we are representatives of the people, you know, whether it's a friendship thing or anything. We have to just be here for the people and what we were elected to do. We are all representatives of everyone here. So with that, thank you all very much, and I will see everybody around. I'll still be at meetings, and hopefully on a border commission, maybe. All right, thank you.
Kirsten, it was wonderful working with you. I guess we have one more meeting, so we can start the waterworks in December. I too, of course, want to express my sadness over our loss, losing Dale. On a personal level, Dale and I both had massive doubts, and we could talk for hours about our little pets. So we had that one in common. And like all of the rest of us, she helped us get in here to run for office and get those papers filed and get this going. So she will be missed, but Candace, I'm sure you'll do, those are big shoes to fill, and I'm sure you're going to do a good job. And I also want to congratulate Zach, Tana, and Ellen and Mayor on their successful election bits. So I'm looking forward to working with you, Zach, starting next month. I want to point out, I, I visited the new pie shop and the smashed burgers in the last couple of weeks. Found it was good food, reasonably priced, and I will definitely be going back. I'm going to order my, pump my Thanksgiving pie, so I don't have to. They will, they will fill out Thanksgiving orders. And I just want to encourage everybody to visit these new businesses because you, you, you support them, and that keeps them a viable business, and then they don't shut their doors in six months. I mean, if everybody went once a month to these establishments, they could stay open. And I think that's all I have.
Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone that came out to the festival.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody that came out to the fall festival. We had so food for the seventh grade class, and they did well. But also just remind everybody, if we don't use it, we lose it. So yeah, it was the first, it was a very good run for the city. I'm glad that we stepped up to that. And we do have also the Holiday Fund Fair on the 7th, again, another great event, just to get out and visit these local vendors that are, you know, coming to our town. It's a little smaller than other places, so just we need everybody out. Just to be present, helping support the things we have in town. Same thing for dinner, this is December 6th, we're working on, thanking our employees, giving them a little dinner, we try to do every year. And again, thank you Candace for joining our internship, I guess, for, for income. Patrick, thank you for everything that you do. I think everyone for voting. I mean, I'm probably going to forget. Thank you guys for having you, trusting me, I guess. Polyverde College Forum, we all can go out too, again, and the one that is, please go out and support your college. They're trying hard also to support our town, but they need to know what we need from them. We've had some good meetings with them. I think they said this guy's been out here, superintendent more than the other one. So this is great that they're actually wanting to know what we need in needles and how they will support us. Also, have a good day.
Councilmember Longbreak?
Yeah, first of all, I'll start off with the Saturday being okay, we'll share with department. Thank you so much for supporting the military moms. That's awesome. Appreciate that. And Candace, welcome. Welcome to your official job. We're saddened to hear that Dale passed away. But I think she talks you apart. So I will go to you, and you've asked, you said you'd go last day, I'm like, no, go ahead and ask Dale, we'll get back with you later. And so you're going to do a good job. And welcome to Zach, and welcome back, Tana and Ellen and Jan. Congratulations on the election. That's, that's awesome. Looking forward to working with Zach. I, I know he's always been fair up here on council. I've been following you when you were on council before. I think you thoroughly saw through the agenda during the chance on it. So I appreciate that. It's appreciated, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you again, my family and friends, for supporting me for mayor. I'm just really excited to do another two years and continue on with Ellen and Camp, with Ellen and Tana, you know, working for the community and the city. I, I'm really thrilled that I received such a great support from the community. In light of that, I was really, you know, saddened by Dale's passing. I mean, when we first started, she was so, I mean, helped us so much with, you know, getting signed up. There's such, you don't know how much it is just to get your ballot together and your forms and everything, and then just the schedule. She was just like my scheduler, telling me what, I'm going to need to go to this meeting and that. And she just was so touching that way to the staff, and especially to the councilor. She was such a great help. And congratulations to you, Candace. You know, you did well, and we just wish you the best. Corvance, I was in the Fort Mahoney Days, prayed with the mayor, former city of Steve Diamonto. I appreciated Chairman Williams asking both of us to come back and do it again. And Patrick and I are both working with the other river cities, you know, so that we can keep in really good communication and start doing marketing and working together for our tourism and just our economies together. I really, it was my first time to do the sheriff's trumpet treat. What a great event. It was so nice to see that all the kids from there dressed in a costume, so I know they were really practiced this season, but what a great event. And thank goodness, the city of needles had tons of kids. As being as I ran out, so it was nice to share. And congratulations to the rec department. They won most which is innovative, interactive awards. So congratulations to Jennifer and her team. And I attended the fall festival. It was really great to see all the booths, to get everybody in the park, and then we're going to make it bigger and better again for next year. And we already have the date, it will be a state the date, and also with the veterans take breakfast. Thank you to the friends of Alpharsis, and we have 16 community sponsors, which is so good, that the community really turns out and does this event to help support. And thank you to our speakers. We had Barbara Earl from the Alps, Mark Olton from the Eagles, and Noah Claypool. He was our special courses, and they did the program. And then also, I just, you know, one again, know that the community comes out and goes and supports our football team as they play in Klein Village. This will be the game of the year. And it'll be 1:00 Saturday at Renninghead Football Field. And again, thank you all for attending and coming out and supporting us and the meetings, and sure. Don't forget the fall festival, the Christmas special, downtown.